Okay, we'll go ahead and get this meeting started tonight. If everybody can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
We have a council, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez? Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Okay, item number two, awards presentations, appointments or proclamations, we have none at this time. So we move on to item three, citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with state open meeting laws. No action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for follow-up and a report. Citizens' comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by 5:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record, however, they will not be read. We have anybody that'd like to speak? Counsel? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Number four, public hearing, we have none. Consent calendar, we have none at this time. Item number six, ordinance presentation, discussion, potential action items. We have one item, fiscal year 2024, 2025 proposed budget revenue, budget proposal.
Thank you. So Mai has prepared a packet that each of you should have up here. And I just want to go over some things in this document. You're not adopting the budget tonight. This is just an opportunity to see a full picture of the budget. It first came to you with anticipated operational expenses for next fiscal year, and then you saw anticipated personnel costs for next fiscal year, and this is the first time you're seeing it with the revenue projections, so this is what allows you to see a full picture. There have been some changes that I've made to personnel expenses and operational expenses for next fiscal year from the last time you saw those versions of the budget, because we did have a general fund deficit for next fiscal year with those personnel costs and operational expenses as proposed. So I'm gonna go through and tell you what I've cut from the last time that you've seen it, and then highlight some items in the budget, and then if you have any questions, just stop me along the way, if that's okay with everybody. Okay, so one of the things that made the budget unbalanced was the additional costs that we already knew we were gonna have with the splash pad and the animal shelter project. So they both came in over what was anticipated, and items came to the council at previous meetings asking to move forward with those projects and pay the difference with the general fund reserve. So that is the plan for next fiscal year. When we have one-time projects and we pull money from reserves to cover those, that's not a structural deficit. It's just a deficit because we have projects that are one-time costs that are exceeding what we're bringing in in revenue that year, but we still have money to pull from reserves to pay for those. A structural deficit is when our annual expenses exceed our annual revenue, and we also had that based on the first draft of the budget. So I have cut that down significantly. I believe it was about $2.4 million in a deficit that was not a structural deficit but attributed to the one-time projects, and it was about $803,000 and some change, give or take, of a structural deficit. And so I've gone through and I've made several changes, and I'll go over those. We had some additional one-time projects that were going to be funded from the general fund that can be paid by reserves because they are just one-time projects. One of them is the extractor, which is a commercial washing machine needed for the fire department. Another is the access system for City Hall that council authorized. That access control system will have a one-time cost for implementation, and then it has an annual recurring cost. So the annual recurring cost should not be funded with the general fund reserves, but the one-time implementation costs would be. The body armor and cameras that are needed for the police department at $10,000. The repair of the three HVAC units for the police department would be funded from general fund reserves. And the outdated, or the radios at the fire department are outdated and need to be replaced. That would be funded from general fund reserves. Also, there's a additional HVAC unit needing to be replaced, and then the Christmas tree electrical panel needs to be replaced. So those are items that we're suggesting that we move to fund through reserves and then to eliminate the structural deficit. I looked at, so the budget is always an estimate, right? It's my best guess of how many people are gonna have babies in next fiscal year, how many people are gonna get married, and they're gonna add those dependents to their health insurance. How many of our new hires are gonna have classic CalPERS membership versus Peppera membership? It's how many people are gonna file workers' comp claims in every department, and so it's never exact. I mean, I wish it could be. I wish I had a crystal ball, but I don't, and so it's just the best estimate. So looking at historical spending is really the best predictor for that, and then anything that we know that's coming about. Like if we know somebody's gonna retire, we can plan for their leave payouts. If we know someone's, you know, pregnant and gonna have a baby, we can plan that they're probably gonna add them to their health insurance. So I went through, and some of the cuts that I made were to workers' comp, anticipated expenses, overtime anticipated expenses, unemployment insurance expenses. And then I did eliminate the requested economic development assistant position because we don't have funding for it. I've adjusted the start dates for the corporal position that Corporal Simons is vacating so that it would start later in next fiscal year. And those are the primary changes. In doing that, it got the structural deficit down quite a bit. But what you see tonight, and really, this is probably the thing that you care the most about in this presentation of the budget, but on page three, if you look at that second line where it says 101 General Fund, and you look all the way to the right column, you'll see that the current deficit is $158,624. I've figured out additional things to do to eliminate that, to balance the budget, so the next version that we would bring you would be a balanced budget for the general fund. And those are the primary changes. There are, there is information on all of the funds here, and we can go as in detail as you'd like, but I just did a overview of highlighting the key things that I think are probably the most important to you.
Go ahead.
All right, so question. So usually about this time, we also hear about how we were at the last budget cycle as well. So like, you know, we'll do a midterm budget review, and then we'll hear about how the budget is gonna turn out, and we're either gonna, we either estimate it correctly, or there's extra money, or there's not extra money. And so how does this fiscal year that we've been in look, that we budgeted for? And I think it says budget amount was 11-6, 1-7-2-7. So how, how close to that are we? Or do we have a carryover coming to the next year, or are we behind? Or are we right on? And if you don't know, that's fine, too. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just curious, because I know that that, that I've asked in the past. And when we do the reviews, we're like, okay, well, we're like 300,000 ahead sometimes, and sometimes it's like, oh, we're, you know, maybe not doing so well. But then, as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, we can understand a little bit more of where we're at. And the reason I'm asking this is, the reason it's important is because this 11-6 jumped to 14-1. That's, you know, about, what, $800,000? So, curious.
Let me run the expense report, and I'll let you know.
That's, okay, that's fine, and it doesn't have to be right now. It, we're just looking over numbers, but if, maybe if we could get that by next meeting, that way we could know where we're at when we're making actual decisions on this.
Okay.
And then, so that's 800,000 worth of additional expenses. Does that 800,000 include the splash pad? Or is that, does not include the splash pad?
Those do, so that includes the splash pad and the animal shelter.
And the animal shelter.
And then all those one-time projects that I previously mentioned.
And how much is the recurring cost on the, on the access system for City Hall?
It's not much. I didn't bring the sheet with me, but I want to say it was under like $2,000 a year off the top of my head. It was like,
Okay, all right.
It was minimal. It's just the implementation that's a primary cost, so the, the recurring cost is budgeted, and it doesn't impact the general fund much.
And can you go over, can we go over the individual things that you said you wanted to move to one-time, to one-time costs that would be moved to the reserve funds, and what the impact on the reserve it would be for those?
Yes, so we have plenty in the reserve to cover one-time costs, and I'll go over what some of those are. So we have, and I just want to clarify, it's not that those expenses are being moved to the reserve account. It's that the reserve account is going to have money coming into the general fund to cover those one-time costs.
Right.
So we have the installation of the access control system at City Hall. We have the purchase of body armor and cameras for the police department.
How much is that one?
$10,000.
Okay. And was this something that was expected to be needed?
Yes, we have additional employees, and we have old equipment that should be replaced.
Okay.
Yeah, which is the same issue that we're, we'll get into in a minute also with the fire department radios.
What do we do with the old things?
The old stuff?
Yeah. Well, I always ask because, well, one time we were doing fire trucks and ambulances, and they said we were gonna donate our ambulances to somewhere else. And I said, well, if it's good enough for someone else to have, why isn't it good enough for us to have? Seriously, I know that's not something that's popular to hear, but that's what I always wonder, like, how is somebody else gonna take our old stuff and use it, and we can't continue to use it? And when we're in a budget deficit like we are now, it, you know, makes.
So we, we have a very healthy general fund reserve, so I'm very comfortable doing one-time projects with general fund reserve money because that's essentially what it's there for, and we need to be using it in future years. I mean, five years from now hypothetically, if we waited to replace these items, we may not have a general fund reserve that's as healthy, so if we can do it now with one-time money, it's ideal, in my opinion.
And how much was the install for the access again?
$20,552.
Okay, okay. What's the next item?
The next one is to repair the three HVAC units at the police department. That's 10,000. $30,000 to purchase outdated radios for the fire department.
How many radios is that?
It's gonna be six of them at 5,000 apiece.
I just, that's just a tough number to swallow. That is insanity. Nothing against you guys, but I've dealt with these people at Motorola, and I don't know what they're smoking. To think that a radio, it is worth that much money, especially what, they don't have hardly any warranties, and when they get broke, you gotta buy a new one. In fact, that asks me to a question. Are we getting a warranty on these things at least? And are we having accidental warranty?
They all come with a one-year limited warranty. These ones are gonna be dual-band, so we can have police and fire and EMS on them, and they're intrinsically safe for them to wear in their structured gear during a fire.
But they got a one-year warranty.
Will they, will they have GPS as well, like the police department?
The radios do not know.
And what happens if they break one? Like, someone falls in a building and breaks one. We gotta buy a new one, or do we give them?
They can be repaired to an extent. It depends on the damage and what they can repair, but screens can be repaired, antennas can be repaired, but the actual case or any internal structure would not be able to be repaired.
Any, anything that's labeled intrinsically safe is super expensive, and it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what industry you're in.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
Because of that, those same radios, if they weren't intrinsically safe, would probably be a tenth of the price.
Right. I remember the PD radios were almost eight grand, I think, I remember. So, yeah, no, it's, and I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm not in favor of you guys having them. I'm only making a comment on the fact that, you know, these radios are really expensive. So, but do you have, the outdated, when you're saying outdated radios, are you meaning that the, the ones you have don't work, or that these are gonna added function, add, add functions to it?
We need to replace six of them that are obsolete. No longer can be repaired or replaced.
Okay, and so that's 30K? Marissa? Okay.
Sorry, I had my mic off.
You're good.
Then we have to replace an HVAC unit at $5,000. $6,700 to replace the electric panel for the Christmas tree area.
Okay.
So that should be $82,252.
Oh, thank you. That's always an ask. I hadn't up as we're going, but I'm not that fast.
I haven't got there yet. And then an additional 30,000 for the extractor.
And what's that for?
It's a commercial washing machine for the fire department, but the chief can explain.
Yeah, so it's, it's a PPE extractor. It's specifically designed to wash the bunker turnout gear, not your everyday t-shirt and pants and stuff. It is specifically designed to wash soiled PPE gear, and the one we have is probably put in when the station was built back in the 80s. It is no longer serviceable. We can't find parts for it, and it's not UL-listed or Cal OSHA compliant anymore. And so when I met with my staff, this was one of the high-topic wishlist items to replace.
Okay. Understandable. All right, so what does that take us to?
That is?
About 110? 112?
112. 112, 252. And so then we also took the one-time money to complete the splash pad and the animal shelter, which the animal shelter, I think, we budgeted 219,000, and it came in at 407,000. And so it's the difference in that, as well as the splash pad, which I believe, off the top of my head, was budgeted for like 980,000 maybe with ARPA funds, and it came in at $2,052.
So how much is that? If you add all the, I guess, if you just add all those up, how much are we trying to fund with the reserve account?
Mai has that information there.
And how much do we have in the reserve currently?
I don't have a current number for the reserve, but I do have an estimated at year-end. So if you look at page four, you'll get to see the fund balance of all the funds. So when we did the media review, it was projected to be a certain, a certain dollar amount, and that is about 6.9 million.
What's that?
6.9, well, it was about 5 million, but we are planning to take something back to council before the fiscal year end, and therefore increasing the, the fiscal year end 2024 at 6.9 million. And then the total cost of all of the projects is going to be in the expenditure column, which is 2.6 million. And at the end of next fiscal year, we are looking at 4.3 million.
The 4.3, what's that tied to? I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
The 4.3 would be the balance after the transfer in.
Okay, all right. I'm on the whole wrong page. All right, here we go. All right. Okay, now, another question. I've been talking to some other cities at, like League of Cities and whatnot, and people are saying that there's an, that there is a way that you can do even short-term investments on these reserve funds, and you can actually make money on them. Have we addressed or looked into any of this stuff?
Yes, I am working with, God, I can't remember. That one's different. So that's our, so we have an investment else, like a United States Treasury that we're investing in, but the operating, we call it the operating revenue, we're going to do something else with it, and it is exactly what you're talking about. I just can't remember what the name of that company is, but we're thinking about taking those money and then investing it, and it is not as strict as the US Treasury, meaning we can take it out when we need to, and there's not going to be any penalties. The US Treasury, we will get penalized if we don't wait for it to mature, so we are looking at that.
All right. And I, I will say that I agree that, you know, using one-time money for these types of expenses is probably exactly, you know, what we should be using it for.
I would never recommend using reserve money to fund ongoing expenses because it'll eventually run out, and so it's ideal to do one-time projects. On that 158,000, we, I, the reason why that number will be further reduced is because we're collecting additional ambulance revenue than what we had planned, so that's a, an increase for next year. But in addition to that, when I did the budget, I anticipated a 10% increase in health insurance costs because that's the standard. And ironically, that's roughly what our renewal came back at. But we had a health insurance committee meeting, and we presented some additional options, and staff voted for a plan that's actual, actually a slight decrease in cost from this year. So once I redo those health insurance numbers and then add in the ambulance revenue, the next time you see the budget, it'll be balanced.
And when we get the, the final version, will it have the nice graphs and things like that that we were used to seeing and?
Mai loves graphs, if you didn't know that.
Yeah, those are really easy, and they're really nice to look at, and I, and I love, right.
We're gonna have graphs and pictures and all of that.
Yeah. And so, how much is, how much is workers' comp going up? Do we know that?
So it, it's hard, okay, because we pay a premium for workers' comp insurance, but then we pay up to our self-insured retention amount, which is $25,000 per claim. So when I'm budgeting for workers' comp, I'm not only budgeting the premium, but I'm budgeting how many people I think are going to have workers' comp claims, and how many of them are gonna reach that $25,000 SIR. And so as a rough number, I usually say about 12% of salary. But then I go back and look at historical usage, and there's some departments like, you know, finance, I don't think has ever had a workers' comp claim, so I don't need to budget 12% for them. And so I can make adjustments based on historical claims.
So I guess a better question would be, do you know how much it went up last year? How much extra we paid?
Not offhand.
Because what I get questions from all the time is how come the budget keeps going up and up and up? And I always tell people that, you know, hey, we have static costs that they're static for one year, but then the next year, they're very dynamic, and they go up a lot, and workers' comp is one of them that has the ability to do that. What are some of the other ones?
So medical insurance, life insurance, vision insurance, dental insurance. Workers' comp, our CalPERS rates, our unfunded liability with CalPERS, those all tend to go up.
And do we know what our unfunded liability is right now?
Yeah, it's actually not very much. It's included, when you get the detailed version, or I guess you have it here. If you look at, for example, page 10, and you look at line 101, 404, 62200, they have no unfunded liability for that department. The ones that usually have the largest are police and fire, so if you look at page 15, the police, or I'm sorry, the unfunded liability for CalPERS for the police department is gonna be kinda towards the center of page 15, so it's 101, 413, 62200, and their unfunded liability is $21,055. So a lot of cities have it like in the millions. We pay it off every year because that way we don't accrue interest. We pay it off every year because that way we don't accrue interest and we're able to pay it off. So it's always included in the budget to fully fund it. And then if you look at the fire department, they're going to be on page 18. And their unfunded liability amount is 101, 416, 62200. So it's kind of towards the bottom of page 18. And their unfunded liability is $37,440. And those are the two largest departments with unfunded liability.
And when you're talking unfunded liability, you're meaning that that's the, the total unfunded liability? Or is that the amount of money? Like what is our total cost if everyone was going to retire today?
So we would have to pay for a valuation that CalPERS does and it's like $90,000 for this report. So they don't tell us that because it's, I mean, it's an unlikely scenario that everybody were to retire today. And so our unfunded liability is based on their current prediction of when people are going to retire and what their current salaries are.
But aren't those really two different numbers? Like the unfunded liability that we're talking about now is the money that we owe to keep current. But then there's also an unfunded liability of how much money does each person's retirement account carry a liability to the city? That's a completely separate number, correct?
It is, but we would have to pay for that valuation report from CalPERS to get an exact number.
Is there a way that we can come close? Because I, I mean, I've, I know some cities, when they're talking about the numbers, they're talking about, you know, two separate numbers like we, like we are right now. You know, a lot of them are in the millions in the first part, like you're saying. And then they're in the double-digit millions when you talk about how those unfunded liabilities are. And I think that for the sake of the public understanding, they're kind of two different things when we look at them. Because, you know, I remember looking at these, I think it came out of the audit, it told about how much it was. And in that audit, it, it was in the millions. It was in the millions of the money that we owe if you look at everyone as a whole. And so I just want people to be aware of that, that it's not like, hey, we only, that we're caught up with this. Because I don't think you can ever be caught, I mean, you can't ever really be caught up because you can be caught up on that payment that you're making. But as far as how much money each person has, and so this is leading into my question of, since we seem to be in a decent position right now, that's actually a great time to offer people golden parachutes who are already up on the top end of the salary. If we're looking at structural deficits right now, one way to get rid of structural deficits is offer people golden parachutes that lets us hire people that are on the bottom of the pay scale and not on, so much on the top of the pay scale. And that is a practice that the school district's done in the past. That's a practice that other people have done. I think it was anywhere from $10,000 to $30,000. And it actually saved long-term monies, a lot of long-term monies. So I don't know if there's any interest in trying to think about doing that, but that could save us money in the long run. If we're looking at structural deficits, a lot of those structural deficits are usually because you have people on the top end of the salary scale.
We can do that. So CalPERS calls it the Golden Handshake Program. And we offered it once before. We could do it again. You have to apply to CalPERS and be approved. And then you have to set eligibility criteria that you're requesting and they have to approve that. And then they'll do like a calculation of what it would cost because you pay it upfront.
So that would be something that I would request as a future agenda item, to have staff look into if we're interested in that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And that's all the questions I have. And I mean, sorry for all the questions and sorry to the public, but we just literally got a copy of this right now. And so we didn't have time to really look over it, so. And I appreciate all your information, Marissa and my. Thank you.
Counsel, have any more questions?
So we don't, we're not asking counsel to adopt a budget tonight. We are just, we wanted to set aside a full hour to be able to talk about it and ask, you know, questions and answer questions and if anybody from the public had any questions. And just have this workshop. If there's any changes that you'd like to see, it's going to come back to you again the second meeting in May and then it's going to come back to you in June. And the hope is that at the June meeting, it gets adopted. So you still have plenty of time to, if you know that there's things that you want changed now in the next version, you can request them. Or you can take it home and review it and go through it very carefully. And then, you know, at the next meeting, you still have plenty of time.
Now, can I ask that we get, all of us get sent a digital copy of this so that we can look over it in a PDF? That'd be great.
She initially was going to do that and I said, give them hard copies for the meeting.
For the meeting, we want hard copies, but yes, that'd be great if we could get a digital copy. And also if you could include the city treasurer in having a copy of that as well.
So with what we've got so far, not including the, the other changes, what's that going to leave us in reserve roughly?
It's that number that Nathan just asked, which was on the top of page, I think they said four. That would be the 4.3 million.
4.3, 4.304.
So it's not much different from last year.
No. And it's, it would still leave us with a healthy reserve balance. It's just there's a lot of things that we would like to have next year that we don't have the money to fund.
I mean, we've done a lot of, and when I say we, I really mean city staff, has done a lot of moving around money to make it make sense. Understanding that the cannabis money, you know, we knew from, to begin with, that it was just going to be a Band-Aid. And it did its purpose. I mean, we've made a lot of money off the cannabis. I know a lot of people come, I get asked every day, where'd the cannabis money go? Whoa, we spent it on operations. And, you know, a lot of it, some of it went to reserve, right? And so, you know, but it is, the state's, you know, really harsh on the taxes and minimum wage increases have hurt the industry. And the reason I know this is because I've talked to some of their folks about what's going on. Like, why is this? Why are, what's the fail? And it's statewide, statewide. I mean, in order to be competitive, to be honest with you, municipalities are lowering their tax rates to almost nothing. And that's what's dragging people away from places like us. And knock on wood, I don't think we've had too many places leave because they're going somewhere else because of the tax rate. But the, I think the real reason that we did this was so that we could fund the police and fire and things like that out of it. So we appreciate anyone that stays, you know, and does that. But that is the reason, you know, the, the amount of money it costs for them to survive in this industry is just not, just not very easy with, for them right now, so.
Yeah, and we did, we're always very financially conservative when planning on revenue. So there's some things that we may receive additional revenue more than we anticipate and that's great, but we don't want to count on it and then have it not happen. So the tractor supply shopping center will hopefully be finished out and there'll be new businesses that come in and bring in additional tax revenue. But we only included the tractor supply tax revenue in case nothing else comes in next fiscal year. Now, that's highly unlikely, but it would be nice to not count on it and have it come in versus be dependent on it and find ways to spend it and then they have construction delays or something.
So this is kind of one of the reasons why, like, I had, I didn't put agenda item for it, but I kind of asked that unless it's super important that we don't add positions mid-year because of the fact that this can happen. You know, we can get in, I know we did the animal control officer. I mean, I think, you know, we all agreed on that. I think it was a needed position. But, you know, look at the scenario that we're in, right? I mean, the amount, every time we add positions mid-year and we don't know where we're at, this type of thing can happen. And I know the staff does the best job they can at trying to understand where we're going to be at and thinking if we can afford it. And I know that counsel's always the final say on it. And so we're all in this, you know, together. And we do take the staff recommendations, you know, highly when you guys give that information. But I would really like to see, you know, us not bring back positions or position changes unless it's going to save us money mid-year because I want to make sure that we can, and this is why I'm always the bad guy up here. Why I'm always the one asking the questions, why I'm always the one like, oh, we can't afford this and this and this, because this is what happens. We come back around and we're like, oh goodness, now we got structural problems. But knock on wood, the staff has been really good at getting us through this, so. But I just wanted to say that, so I appreciate it.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to city managers' announcements.
I just wanted to share that today on the city's Facebook page, if you have access to Facebook, I shared some information about programs available through Fresno Economic Opportunity Commission if people need help paying their electricity bill or their city water or gas bill. We also still have some of the gas assistance applications upfront to help with the gas portion of your city utility bill. And then there is some additional information that was shared about a crisis number that teens can call if they need to and temporary housing that's in Fresno for youth or young people, young adults, I think is what it said, that need services.
Counsel, have any announcements or reports? Okay, and I have none at this time. Any future agenda items?
I have a future agenda item that I would like to look into, to staff to look into, if it would be beneficial for us to offer golden handshakes in order to take advantage of cost savings.
Anything else, counsel? Okay, and move on to the next one. We have no closed session items. With that being said, we are adjourned until 6 o'clock tonight.